To order this meeting of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange, we will begin with an invocation by Reverend Anthony Criswell of the First Baptist Church on the Square, who I believe is also a cousin to our own city councilman Mark Mitchell, if you would acknowledge that. Reverend Criswell, if you'd come to the podium and offer the invocation. That will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Our heaven and fatherly thank you for this day that you've given us. We just thank you for all the opportunities it has afforded us, and we pray that you would watch over the meeting tonight, that you would bless these leaders, give them wisdom, give them discernment, and give them true love and heart and care for the citizens of this wonderful city of LaGrange. Help us and bless us all to do the right things and to be good neighbors with each other and to be good citizens so that we can be a glowing example to all of our citizens in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Criswell. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 23rd.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. I'm delighted tonight to be able to make a presentation of a 30-year service award to Unrikey Parks, Senior Patrol Officer with the LaGrange Police Department. I would like to ask Officer Parks to come forward with any members of your family that you would like to bring, as well as Chief Deckmar, who I think I saw with us, if you'll join me at the podium. So we're delighted tonight to be able to recognize 30 years of service to the city of LaGrange and our citizens by Officer Parks. Let me tell the council and our audience a little bit about Officer Parks. Unrikey Parks started his career with the LaGrange Police Department in March of 1991 and graduated from the police academy on May 24, 1991. He started in the patrol division and then was assigned to serve as a warrant officer, as well as working in the recorder's court. A few years later, Unrikey was reassigned to patrol, and shortly after which he was asked to start a juvenile program by writing a grant for cops in schools. When the program started, Officer Parks began working in the school system, as well with the juvenile court, where he was tasked with court security, as well as transportation of juveniles to and from youth detention facilities. When he was not in court, he spent his time in the various schools, interacting with both students and staff. In June of 2001, Unrikey successfully completed the 80-hour School Resource Officer Training Program and was assigned as a full-time School Resource Officer at Trupe High School, where he served until November of 2020. Unrikey's dedication to his community and the citizens he has served has long been noted, not only in the agency and among his peers, but for the positive impact that he has made with the youth of this community. He has served as a role model, a mentor, a teacher, a father figure, and an ambassador for the LaGrange Police Department. Unrikey's involvement with the youth has been continuous throughout his career. Over the past 15 years, Unrikey has assisted with school sports programs as a coach at Callaway High School. He has worked with the Boys and Girls Club and has been an important part of the success of the yearly youth camp, which started with only 15 kids and is now seeing approximately 80 kids attending camp. Officer Parks epitomizes human kindness and caring attributes that have been consistent throughout his career with the LaGrange Police Department. Will you join me in thanking Officer Parks for 30 years of service? Officer Parks, would you like someone to place the pin on you? Or you want me to...
Yeah, you're by me. I won't.
Chief Deckmar, is there anything you'd like to add?
Well, when I first came in 1995, one of the first individuals that I spoke with was Judge Key. And there were some concerns about some of the folks that had been assigned to that position. And it didn't take me long to recognize that Officer Parks had a commitment and interest in working with our youth. And so I approached him and said, "I'd really appreciate it if you'd take on this responsibility." And he stepped up. And something he did mention, part of what he did, which was not required, but what he initiated on his own with the juvenile court, is provide what we call sweeps, was ensuring that those that were on juvenile probation were where they should be, and if they weren't, he was very effective in providing informal interventions that persuaded the juvenile women that they needed to be at home. When the first SRO program became available, it was as a result of the grant that Unrikey spearheaded, and the 20 years that he has spent as SRO, just recently transferring to community outreach. But I had the opportunity, this last Christmas parade, of riding with him, and all these folks are waving at me. And I thought, I said, "I have never been this popular." She said, "They're not waving at me." So on behalf of the LaGrange Police Department and me personally, Unrikey, I just want to thank you for your commitment. The good news for you is you've given 30 years to the city. I only expect another 20.
Officer Parks, would you introduce your family to council and then make any comments you'd like to add?
This is my wife, Cynthia. This is my youngest son, Rick Tad. This is my sister-in-law, Robin. And that's my oldest son, Rick Tavis. 30 years, a long time. So I just want to say thank you, God. Thank you for those 30 years.
Let's thank Officer Parks again for 30 years.
I called on Unrikey, I saw his son, and said, "I am glad I didn't have to feed that."
Okay, so let's watch it, Katie.
Two, three. I'm going to take a couple. There you go, and Jen's going to take some. All right, ready? One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Tommy, you good? What was it, Tommy, it's back? Okay, great. Thank you for your service. Okay, well, we also tonight are looking forward to the annual recognition of our LaGrange Youth Council, and I will turn it over to Ms. Katie VanShure.
Good evening, mayor and council. We just want to say that we are so proud to present you again this year, like we do every year, our LaGrange Youth Council. Even during COVID, we were able to accomplish a lot of great things with some really great young leaders, so we're very proud of them. Thanks to the leadership of Adam Spees, I cannot say enough about Adam and Jeremy Andrews. We want to thank Meg and the city council, the mayor, of course, for letting us do this and letting us pour into these young people. It is an honor to do this, and we take this very seriously, to pour into these young people. And I will tell you, we are in very good hands, as you will see. So first of all, we're going to call up our leader of LaGrange Youth Council, our chairperson, Zoe Mitchell.
Hi, my name is Zoe Mitchell. I'm currently serving as the Chair of LaGrange Youth Council. As you may know, we are an advisory board of 24 members that are made up of juniors and seniors from our local high schools. COVID has affected everyone this past year, and it certainly has affected our youth council. Unfortunately, we've had to shift a few of our meetings to online platforms and cancel many of our team bonding experiences, such as the annual trip to the Georgia Capitol and the escape room. These obstacles did not stop us from making an impact on our community. We decided to represent two major topics that we felt were most important in our community, which were mental health and mentorship. Also, we have participated in multiple leading LaGrange better than we founded leader cleanups. I, along with Katie VanShure, have coordinated multiple leading LaGrange better than we founded leader cleanups in coordination with LaGrange Academy to better serve our community. I will also be representing the LaGrange Youth Council on a Zoom call with the Georgia Municipal Association early night. They are doing this to shed light on the accomplishments of youth council across Georgia. At the beginning of the year, we discussed what committees we wanted to focus on. When we were discussing ideas, one stuck out among the group. This idea was mentorship in our community. We wanted to help our youth grow in school as well in life. One project that we started on was our reading campaign. We met with Gail Gordon with Success by Six, who donated many books to our project. Our goal was to video members reading children's books every week, but to post on Facebook and YouTube, in hopes that parents would show these videos to their kids and follow along in the readings.
Hi, my name is Kavarius Perry, and I'm a junior at LaGrange High School. The LaGrange Youth Council and Success by Six wants you to know just 20 minutes of daily reading can make a big difference in a child's success in school. Today, I'll be reading Hip Hop Frog by Sally Kinberg, so let's get reading. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog, born in some jelly. Look like a dot, grow a little tail, and wriggle quite a lot. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. When I'm very small, tadpole is my name. Might look funny, but I'm a frog all the same. And as we can see, he's transitioning from having a tail to growing his two feet to become a frog. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. See me leap. I can jump really high. Got a long sticky tongue to catch a nice fly. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. Leap from the water in a couple of shakes, hide from birds or slithery snakes. As we can see, he must protect himself from being eaten by the predators from above and below. Did you know a predator is an animal that eats another animal? Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. Like to sing, got a croaky song. Sing to my friends all night long. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. Eyes like marbles, big and round. Look for my friends in our damp playground. As you can see, the frogs are hiding underneath the lily pad. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. When it's winter, I have a snooze. Sleep at the bottom of the deep, dark ooze. As we can see, ew, it's yucky, but this is where they go night-night every day. Hip hop, I'm a tiny frog. Wake in the spring, look for snack. Watch out, bugs, the frogs are back. And as we can see, they have to be careful now, because now he's back to catch them. And here are some interesting froggy facts. Baby frogs are called tadpoles, as we can see here. They love nibbling on yummy waterweed. Sometimes our skin changes color so our enemies can't see us. Did you know that that's called camouflage? African bullfrog spends most of his day sitting in a muddy puddle. Yuck. When mommy tungara lays her eggs, daddy tungara covers them up with a big ball of froth to protect them from germs. Tree frogs have sticky pads on their fingers and toes so they can climb trees. Flying frogs can glide from tree to tree by spreading their parachute toes. I don't know about you, but I would love to have those toes. Thank you for reading Hip Hop Frog with me today. I hope to see you next time, and have fun.
This is a wonderful campaign, and we believe that this will increase reading levels among the children in our local school systems. Now Mary Frances will be informing you about our mental health committee.
Good evening. I'm representing the Mental Health Committee, which was created by the Youth Council in 2018. Each year since, the Youth Council has continued to make this a priority, as mental health is a consistent concern among today's people. Since we were unable to do in-person events this year, we worked with Dr. Kelly Veal of the Veal Group to create a virtual Q&amp;A session that we promoted on Facebook and Instagram. To date, the video has been viewed over 500 times. You are about to see a clip of Dr. Veal addressing where so we can reach out if they are struggling with mental health issues.
Our next question are, what ages are most likely to be more affected by mental health disorders?
I would say all. It's just, right now, we're seeing anything and everything, but mental health, there's no time limit. I mean, specifically elderly people, everybody, developmental phases face different issues. So it looks different for different age ranges, right? For teens, it's different than it is for college students, and it is for young parents or elderly people. So I would say it just depends on the developmental stage they're in. I wouldn't say, I mean, there isn't one that is bigger than the other of a population.
The next question is, who can I turn to for help if I'm struggling with a mental health issue?
Great question, Louise. And there are so many people that you can turn to, but I know, and that's not always, that's a difficult question, I would say, because you might be a young adult, and this, I know this is geared more toward your age range, right? So it's more toward the youth, but you may not have that person that you feel safe going to. You might not have a secure, safe friend group, or you may not have friends that, you know, you can rely on. So that's a difficult question. I would hope that there's someone that you can go to and talk to about this at your school or college. All the colleges have college counselors on campus, and they're free. So if anyone's going off to college, that's one good resource to know about, and you can visit the college campus.
You can view it on the LaGrange Youth Council's Facebook page. Now I want to introduce our vice chair, Caroline Shelton.
Hi, I'm Caroline Shelton. I'm the vice chair, and I've served for two years on the council. We've had several different community members or city employees come to speak to us over the last year that we've been in session. And city manager Meg Kelsey came to speak to us about Robert's Rules of Order, the importance of leadership, the ins and outs of our local, and the ins and outs of our local government during our October meeting. At our November meeting, Representatives Randy Nix and Bon Trammell discussed the Page Program for young people to get involved with the House processes, their work as Georgia House Representatives, and how they work across party lines to make change. Chief Lou Deckmar and the LPD spoke to us in January on the LPD's Community Relations and Procedures with the Mini Police Academy. Instead of a regular March meeting, we were given the opportunity to go to a Church County School Board meeting, and were able to ask Dr. Schumey and board members Kathy Hunt and Brendan Brooks questions about how our school system is run and how they make decisions before we witnessed a live TCSF meeting. Thank you to everyone who has poured their time and effort into presenting at our LaGrange Youth Council meetings. These people help grow and mentor young community leaders here and prepare us for a bright future. Whether we live in a small town or a big city, this experience has opened our eyes to all the different leaders a town needs to survive and thrive, and how important it is for these community leaders to work together to provide citizens a safe community with access to services they need. They have shown us how important it is to educate ourselves about the community where we choose to live someday, so that we can better identify resources that it may be lacking, and then be a positive force for change, no matter the type of leadership we choose.
So as you all can tell, even though this has been an unorthodox year, we've been very productive, and we've been able to get a lot done, even through use of Zoom and social, this is everything that we've had to overcome. The students have been able to accomplish a lot in this kind of year of COVID. And so we would like to honor them. Mayor Thornton, you would come up front, and Ms. City Manager Meg Kelsey. We would like to give them certificates of completion and a small miniature key to the city for our seniors. We are extremely proud of them. You know, I expect any one of them to give you all a run for your money, for your seats one of these days in the future. They are amazing future leaders. So we are going to call them up and give them stuff. We're going to start with Zoe Mitchell, senior at LaGrange Academy and chairperson.
Sorry, Zoe.
All right, and Caroline Shelton, senior at LaGrange High School and vice chair.
I'm coming. Sorry.
Oh, fell out, hold on, hold on. We've got to prepare them. We have equipment failure here, okay?
All right, Mary Frances, senior at Springwood School and historian. Lauren Hale, senior at LaGrange High School.
Congratulations.
Eileen Huang, senior at LaGrange High School. Elijah Langston, senior at LaGrange High School. Congratulations. Mackenzie Mitchell, senior at LaGrange High School. Kate Asbell, junior at LaGrange High School. Millie Criswell, junior at LaGrange High School. Molly Olinger, junior at LaGrange Academy. Kavarius Perry, junior at LaGrange High School.
You're impressed. Great job. I was impressed. You'd be a school teacher, right?
Charlie Philpines, junior at LaGrange High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Riley Whitlow, junior at LaGrange Academy. All right, I'd like to, you know, thank all the students who have been with us for this strange but awesome year, and for two years, on top of that, two strange years, I would say. So a big thank you to everyone at LaGrange Youth Council. So you guys have been fantastic.
Oh, yeah, group photo, absolutely.
We're looking for great things from our rising seniors.
All right, who are we looking at? I'll be first.
I'll be first. I'll go next. One, two, three. You're good, you're fast. One, two, three.
And we would like to invite all of youth council and, of course, city council, as well as any future students who might be interested, and all's parents, to Los Apollos after this for a little get-together to talk to our future leaders. Thank you all.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you to all the staff members. There's a little bit of feedback. I'm not sure where that's coming from. Yeah, thank you, thank you to all the staff members who work with the youth council. Appreciate all of the members of the youth council, both the juniors and seniors, for the time that you have committed to this, to this project this year, and look forward to visiting with you some more at Los Apollos. Under resolutions, we have a resolution designating the redevelopment agency.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So tonight, as part, we have a public hearing just a little bit later on agenda for Dawson Street redevelopment plan. As part of that, we need to designate the mayor and council as the redevelopment agency. As you know, we have been in ongoing conversations with the developer, Tammy Finley, who's here tonight, of how to redevelop that school. The area is an area of light. Looking forward to the redevelopment of that and some land behind it that the city owns. Staff would recommend that council adopt this resolution.
I want you to adopt the resolution.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the resolution. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay, we will move on to public hearings, and we have three tonight. First, we are here to receive comments on a request for a special use permit for 508 Greenville Street. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. The public hearing has been properly advertised. At this time, we would take any comment.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to comment on this request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to a public hearing to receive comments on a request to annex and zone property located on Bush Drive.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised, and we would take any comments.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to comment on this request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and then we will move on to a public hearing to receive comments on the Dawson Street redevelopment plan.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised, and we would take any comment.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to comment on this plan? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move on to reports. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The DLDA unanimously adopted the correspondence according to what was sent to city manager, our city manager, as far as concerns Church Street parking.
So the DLDA board unanimously recommended that we two-hour park the left side of Church Street, but not the right side. Is that correct? Okay. So the council discussed that at length this morning in work session, with that recommendation coming from the DDA. If there's no objection, I will ask the city staff to prepare an ordinance to that effect that we will have on first reading for the 27th. No action, but then second reading on the, in May. Okay? I don't need them, yeah, yeah. I don't need, yeah, yeah. Any other council members have anything to report?
Yes, I do. I met last week with Nathan Crawford from the Dash Association, and we had an interesting discussion, interesting discussion about funding, they definitely want to, they're seeking funding coming up in this fiscal year, but what are the projects they could work on to make Dash more viable in the community? And we were just kind of like brainstorming, and we came up with the idea that some of the houses that are on Hamilton Road that are slated for destruction could possibly be relocated to some of Dash's properties. Dash has never moved a house, I don't think the city has ever moved a house, nobody knows anything about it, thanks to Councilman Arrington for going out and looking at some of these houses, giving his advice and expertise on it. But I would implore the city staff to work with Dash whenever and however possible, because you guys always have, but I think there's an opportunity there to recycle some of these houses, given the rising price of materials nowadays, I think that there would be significant cost savings there in trying to relocate some of these houses to Dash properties.
Well, thank you, Councilman Gaskin, for bringing that to our attention, and appreciate your meeting with Dash to discuss that. So the good news is that the Hamilton Road widening project is moving forward, and that's been a long time, that's been a long time coming, and we're delighted that it is. I'm pleased also that the staff at the DOT has been working very closely with our city staff to coordinate the timeframe for construction and utility relocation, et cetera. So Ms. Kelsey, if you will, just add that to the agenda to discuss with the DOT, to find out, are there any opportunities there?
The meeting's on Friday.
Yeah, see, see if that's an option.
Possibility.
That would be fantastic.
Sounds great. Anything else from the council? Okay, city manager report, Ms. Kelsey?
Just the Tuesday night, Mayor, financial statements for March and the payments of bills, bills over $2,000, those items are attached to your materials, I don't have any particular comments at this time, I am in in-depth review right now of the budget meeting with Department head, so looking forward to presenting that to you at our second meeting in May. Glad to answer any questions if you might have.
Any questions for the city manager?
Can we talk about that meeting again, just remind me of when, so that's the second?
The budget.
The second meeting in May. It's the Memorial Day this year, and I don't have any.
But the usual morning.
Yeah, 25th.
If that's your pleasure, yes, sir, that seems to have worked in the past, just start at a work session and just continue through the day, y'all can mark that out on your calendars. If you prefer to do something different, certainly.
Sounds good. May 25?
May 25 is the, is the second, is the second meeting, normally we start at normal time at 11:00, and then we just work through the afternoon, so there will be lunch, obviously, but, but we will just keep working, and if history is any guide, it will be done around four, three or four, and have a little bit of a break before the evening council meeting. Okay? Anything else, Ms. Kelsey? Okay, we'll move on to first reading of ordinances, and I have an ordinance annexing property owned by Bush Drive LLP and located on Bush Drive.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by Bush Drive LLP and located on Bush Drive to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then I also have a first reading of an ordinance zoning property to be annexed into the city located on Bush Drive and owned by Bush Drive LLP.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use of real estate to be annexed into the city located on Bush Drive and owned by Bush Drive LLP to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then under second reading of ordinances, I have an ordinance rezoning property located at 508 Greenville Street from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 General Commercial.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of LaGrange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use of real estate located at 508 Greenville Street and owned by New Ventures Inc. to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved, second.
I have a motion to second to approve the ordinance, is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the ordinance say aye, any opposed no, that passes unanimously. We will move on to petitions and communications, and I have a request for a special use permit for 508 Greenville Street.
Mr. Mayor, you just had a public hearing, you've not received any comment, I'd be glad to answer any questions, this will be the time for you to vote on this request.
Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Have a motion to second to approve the permit, any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed no, that passes unanimously. We also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone 103 Aaron Drive from R5 A1200 Residential to R2 Residential. Ms. Kelsey?
Good evening, Mayor and council members, a request has come from the owner of a parcel located at 103 Aaron Drive, that this property be rezoned from R5 A1200 Residential to R2 Residential. Planning Board meant to consider this request yesterday, and did vote unanimously to approve this request, yet the action item is to call for a public hearing tonight to be held on May the 11th, 2021, if it is your pleasure to do so.
I want to call for a public hearing, second.
I have a motion to second to call for the public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed no, that passes unanimously. And we also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on a request to rezone 1734 Whitesville Road from R44 Residential to GI General Industrial.
A request has come from the owner of a parcel located at 1734 Whitesville Road, that this property be rezoned from R44 Residential to General Industrial. The planning Board meant to consider this request yesterday, and did vote to recommend approval of this request. The action item is to call for a public hearing tonight to be held on May the 11th, 2021, if it is your pleasure to do so.
Call for a public hearing.
Have a motion to second to call for public hearing, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye, any opposed no, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Costel. Ms. Van Sure, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir, our good news for tonight, of course, our youth council, we have a bright future, we look forward to Los Napolos tonight, and also we'd like to share with the mayor and council to be aware that our very own councilmen, Nathan Gaskin and city manager Meg Kelsey, will be a part of a podcast that we're going to be with Alan Pruitt, he's the director at St. Mark's, that they're going to be showcasing Leaving LaGrange Better Than We Found It, and they've been a wonderful partner with us, and we appreciate the partnership of St. Mark's, a Episcopal church.
Great, a podcast star, add that to your resume, right?
Give me 30 seconds if you would.
30 seconds, Kelsey.
30 seconds, I just want to let everybody know that you won't find it in the newspapers and it's not on the radio, and I know there's a lot of stuff that's going on out there with black men being shot by the police, all that stuff, I know it, it seems a little overbearing, and it seems like it's far removed, but this past Sunday, a black man was shot on Murphy Avenue. And it's just, it's getting to the point where it's just so, it doesn't even faze us anymore, doesn't make the paper, no one wants to talk about it, it's just, oh, well, life goes on. And then there was a disturbing video that I saw on TikTok where a young man had OD'd around other men, a black man, no one called for help. I raised these issues because I brought up the issue before about genocide. Some people think that word doesn't fit in the American vocabulary, and I dare each and every one of you to look up the definition of genocide when a, when a society stops caring about the well-being of any one particular group and/or sex individual, whether it be religious, race, or whatever, when it gets to the point where nobody says anything, we are complicit in the act of genocide. I want everyone to search your hearts and realize the plight of black men, not only in America but around the world. I was a young black man, I've had guns pulled on me, I've been shot at, this is a very hard life, and I appreciate the youth council for having the forward thinking of mental awareness and where to go for help, because I'm here to tell you, 52 years old, and I know we're in trouble, and I know there's no place I can go for help, only thing I can do is drop down on my knees and beg God to help me. It is so crazy out here, and it's just like, I know people care, but as a society, we really don't care, it's only the sensational stuff. It is dangerous being young, male, and black, it is dangerous. So I just wanted to share that with all of you, please look up the UN definition of genocide, see what you can do in your hearts and in your lives to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin, thank you for continuing to bring awareness to those issues, both in our community and around the country, appreciate you sharing your heart. Anything else from the council? We stand adjourned.